I'd like to eliminate that.
All right.
August group. With that, those changes, I move the approval.
Okay.
Along with amendment.
All right. Did you want to make your?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
For the purposes of a little bit of fluid continuity for us and the crowd that's here that have come to us tonight, I'd like to ask that the annexation 1-17, which is requesting deferment by the applicant, as well as rezoning 2-17 to deferment request by the applicant, be moved up in the agenda to first and second, and rezoning 1-17 by Mr. Dickinson be moved to third place. And then that'll allow us to have enough time to spend of time on each item.
Okay. All right. Any other amendments? Okay, let me read this back. All right. We need a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda with the following: the omission of the approval of the minutes for 32817. We are going to add election of a chair and vice chair, moving the 2-17 to first and second place, and... Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second to make those changes?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to make those changes. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. So that being said, we're moving on to new business for the election of the chair.
I move the election of Kirk Craft as chair of planning and zoning for another year.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to have me as chairman again. All those in favor, raise your right hand. One abstaining. Thank you.
I move John Hattaback to be vice chair.
We have a motion for John Hattaback to be vice chair. Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second for John Hattaback to be vice chair. All those in favor, raise your right hand. One abstaining. All right.
Thank you.
We have a chair and a vice chair. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Me too.
All right. All right, next up will be, we're moving it up, the ANX 0117 deferment request, and Vicki Coleman's going to go over that.
This is for the two items that were just actually initially heard for a public hearing last month, and also had a public hearing only at the recent city council meeting of the April city council meeting as well. But for annexation 0117 and the rezoning 0217, the applicant represented by Christopher Hunt with Green Community Development is seeking to defer his request. As was discussed at the last city council meeting, the applicant has the two things. It's the addition of additional land as part of his request and potentially laying out a different subdivision layout, if you will. It's my understanding that the applicant is, has a desire to meet with the community, and we thought that it was most appropriate for us to make a recommendation based on their request to defer for continued action at the June city council meeting. So staff recommendation is deferral.
Is that deferred for us or for the council or both?
I'm recommending that it be deferred for this group as well, because you don't have the information to consider or really to have a meaningful discussion on what they're proposing at this particular time.
Okay, so it's not deferred to the next council meeting, it's?
It's deferred to the next...
June.
Right, which will be your next planning commission meeting as well as the next city council meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So what did you need from us, a motion to accept the deferment?
That's appropriate, that's fine.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second to defer both requests of annexation and rezoning. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. It is deferred. All right, next up is the rezoning.
This is the request from the applicant Doug Dickinson of Villareca, Georgia. He's requesting a zoning and map amendment for a property located along Edge Road. This is a deferral from last month as well. The request is to rezone from rural development to light industrial. The applicant has since submitted an updated site plan, if you will. Staff has reviewed the information and is recommending approval on the rezoning. I can just give you a little bit more information. The property is currently, the site plan does not necessarily appear as it was last presented to you. I will let you know that with the change in staff recommendation, any proposed rezoning, excuse me, any proposed subdivision of this would have to come back before your commission if it is going through any of the preliminary plat review. So at this particular time, it's just showing as the one parcel, it did segregate a portion off that was to remain undeveloped. But again, if there is a proposal for subdivision, it will, it would have to come back before your commission for consideration of the uses. Also with the timing of... Also with the timing of the change in what would be the upcoming land use map amendment, staff certainly took that information into consideration in terms of where and what the available, currently what is the available land that's designated as industrial and what more than likely could change over with the update of the upcoming changes with the future land use map. So it still provides the planning commission opportunity to be heavily involved in any proposal to subdivide this property in the future.
You say there were changes that were made to the information part, because I don't see any changes in the material that I received.
You should have an updated site plan.
This looks identical to what we had last month?
There is a portion of it where adjacent to what is the existing residential, that part is to certainly identifies what would not necessarily be developed as industrial at this particular point in time. So that part is segregated out, if you will, but for all the remaining portion of it, like I said, if they were to propose to subdivide the property, that would have to come back before you. Now granted, they have shown what is an extension of a road, but that doesn't necessarily mean that what is being adopted here is being adopted per the site plan.
This outline is identical to what it was the last time. Are you saying this so-called residential tract is changed?
That segment, as opposed to it being the entire parcel that would be, would be rezoned, what we certainly did take into consideration on what some of the development standards would be and what it would allow for, and in essence, what would go across that stream wouldn't necessarily be developable, so...
So they extended that line, is what it looks like?
Correct.
The approximate lot length, did you see that?
So the zoning line would follow the line of what that creek is.
Okay. Yeah.
So you're essentially leaving an extensive buffer, if you will, almost in a sense, adjacent to the existing residential.
Mm-hmm.
And like I said, it just, what I certainly wanted to do was be able to look at what the land around that particular property is and what would be some recommended changes that would go forward in a future land use map, which really you're at the time where you should be updating it now. So that was one of the things that I certainly took into consideration.
Okay. So there still are no proposed uses?
There's no proposed... So you will have the opportunity to see it again if they propose to subdivide the remaining, what would be light industrial if it is approved.
All right. So do we go through bringing the parties back up since this was sent back to us, or...
If you have additional questions, or you certainly may want to have them, you certainly can allow them to speak if need be. Certainly, opening the public hearing again, you certainly have the option to do that or should do that, it was advertised, excuse me.
I have another question for Vicki.
Yes.
Why was LU5C eliminated? That was the planned development of roads, long-term demands, et cetera. It was in the proposal last month, but is eliminated from this.
Give me one second.
Under policies.
Do you happen to have the packet from last? If you don't mind, could you read that out? I have only the current packet.
I don't have it with me, other than I noted that it was eliminated, and my question is why? I don't, well, I know I didn't bring last month's with me.
Remember what the numbers were?
LU5C.
Yeah.
It basically discussed planned development of roads and long-term demands. I don't have the wording with me.
Okay. I would really have to see what it was, but basically, if that's just generally what it said, what I would say is that certainly the land uses, adjacent land uses to the road would certainly complement what type of road and the layout of the road in particular. I would have to specifically read the comprehensive plan policy that you're referring to. Unfortunately, I don't have the packet that we submitted last month in front of me to read it, but...
And also under staff comments, you say the proposed use would not have a negative impact on usability of adjacent and nearby properties. How do we know that? We don't know what the proposed requests for the uses are.
Well, a couple of things. One of the reasons why the change is, if you will, what is now that added buffer there is where the existing residential happens to be. For all the other adjacent parcels, they're vacant and undeveloped. So you can make the same argument the other way, if you will, but any proposed industrial that would come in adjacent to what is now vacant, undeveloped, without knowing what that future, what and if the future land use would be that would come in, there are certain things that could be done to mitigate any adverse impact. So if it is to remain residential, even though it's vacant, undeveloped, there are development standards that are in place, which are other buffers that are identified. So those are just some of the ways, but the biggest thing was, that I could do was address the existing residential where people were really already living. And that's one of the reasons with the change, is that we're buffering those who already live there. In other, in other words, if you, if those other adjacent sites, if they build out, you kind of really will already know that you're going to be moving adjacent to industrial if that industrial comes in first.
And also, the request still does not comply with future land use?
It doesn't comply with future land use, but one of the things that I just mentioned is you're, the city's really at a point where it should be updating its future land use. And so one of the things that you take into consideration when you are updating your land use policies are, you know, you're balancing several needs. You're balancing, you know, for an economic development standpoint, how do you want to grow? So those are things that I looked, did the city have enough set aside? That was one of the big parts of the discussion that came with this particular property, and would it complement, if you would, what some of the surrounding or existing land uses happen to be? It'd be probably one of the ones that would be most likely to convert over to light industrial in that area, coming down Edge and Liberty, just because some of it already exists. So that was something that I certainly took into consideration.
Any other questions?
I have some questions. I'm not sure if they're staff or the...
Well, we'll go ahead and open it up then. So what we just heard, in essence, is this new request is, if you look at that big map up there, and basically there's a line that now the proposed area is track, it's called Track 1, is the only track that is being requested for rezoning for light industrial. So it's that perfect rectangle up there. The area south abutting or anywhere near the house is remaining residential.
Correct.
Okay, there we go. All right, at this point, if we could, if the applicant or representative of the applicant would step forward and, I guess, do a review, pretty much what we just went over.
Pretty much just what you went over there.
Okay.
Look, there's, I can't see it from here, but it's a little over five acres that's being left residential, and that does not include the 50-foot buffer on the north side of that creek. So it's about six acres that's going to be left untouched, and everything north of that line will be light industrial. It will stay within the light industrial regulations, whatever y'all approve to put light industrial in there. Most likely, it'll probably be our business.
Okay. And the 50-foot buffer, just for illustration, is the, whatever you want to call it, that line?
That's that line, it's running diagonal.
Kind of up with the diagonal stripes.
What happens to the little corner to the far left?
To the south, the low end, staying residential.
Because that's not, that's not indicated.
Yeah, they couldn't do anything with it because of the buffer.
All of Track 2 was staying residential.
Yeah.
All of Track 1 is, we're asking with, and we had that drawn up in a legal description of Track 1 of exactly what we're wanting to rezon.
Track 2 is everything south is a buffer line.
Of that, of that state buffer that's marked on there.
Two little triangles.
That's not clear from the, from the drawing. But I understand.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Oh, just for the record, your name and...
Oh, I'm Doug Dickinson.
Yeah.
I'm in Villareca, Georgia.
Okay, thank you, Doug. All right, anyone else like to speak in favor of this proposal?
What can I have?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
See, I have some more questions. In your notes down here, section, it says Phase 1 will be constructed by March 2018 and Phase 2 by March 2019. Are those delineated on...
That would be, that's just some kind of estimated time based on some sales of the existing property up on Baker Industrial. Based on those sales, if we'd need to go ahead and extend into those properties to move our operation further back.
So you don't really have a map division of Phase 1 to Phase 2?
No, not unless we figure out how, who's coming in and buying and what they want to build and what size lot they need, and we're really just trying to bring customers in with land that we can develop to their needs.
And that would come back before us, as far as being subdivided?
Unless it was one single piece.
One single, right.
Unless it was one single business that went in there.
So if one single business bought this whole lot, they could put whatever they want there?
Under the light industrial.
Under, under light industrial.
Nothing outside of light industrial.
So whatever, again, it still has to adhere with the zoning code, but, or conform, but if they're proposing to subdivide, subdivisions have to come before the planning commission for consideration of a preliminary plat, so...
What are your anticipated water and sewer uses?
Sewer would be, we would use, based on what kind of business, I mean, that's, that's going to be, we're going to have to have the soils tested to determine whether we can put it septic or whether we're going to have to pump, put a pump station and pump it to up there near the truck stop. I think that's the closest location we'd be able to get it to. But based on what would come in there, if it's, if it's a business that's doing paving, for instance, and all they need office space, we'd probably put a septic tank. If we had a uniform business that was going to be running a lot of water, then we'd have to put a sewer system and pump it.
I would think that you would want to have the highest value land available to you, which does require you to spend some money upfront to invest in the property. And too many times we find that later on down the road, the investor developer wishes he had completed a lot of the infrastructure, such as complete water and sewer, mainly the sewer side. Because then someone does come along and said, you know, if you just had sewer here, I buy tomorrow, be ready to plan it out and sign a contract. But when you have to wait to then find out how much the sewer is going to cost and do the installation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, your potential client has moved on to the next available parcel. So I would hopefully suggest that you, strongly suggest that you would consider putting sewer into project.
I don't disagree with that. Again...
On your understanding...
I own 21 acres over on the other side that I would like to do. If I do one, it'll be both and have both sewer available, but it takes more than just 20 acres.
Actually, the sewer is not up at the truck stop, the sewer is down lower, closer towards you.
Um...
Because it has to serve the subdivision to the east.
There may be something lower than that, I haven't heard of yet, but I'm not saying there's not.
There is, because there's a pump station in there, there's a lift station on one of the first streets, never looking at it.
This is some, this is kind of low ground. I don't know where we'd have to get to to get that, but...
Well, you gotta go, well, actually, actually, no, you'd still be better to go the east, even though down, down...
At that point in the game, I'd be wanting to, I'd be wanting to take the remainder of the lots on Baker Industrial plus Cross and pick up the 6 to 21 acres on Liberty.
Just go that way.
Put a one pump station to catch all that.
Run it down the hill, send it all back up.
Correct.
Be done, yeah, I agree, yeah. Because I'm thinking, topography wise, you can go down, down the hill to South Wilson, but then you gotta go up South Wilson. But the problem is then you do have to go back over to the truck stop. You actually have to go back over in front of Cole's house.
Yeah.
Yeah, and catch and pick up.
Well, it's right there, it's right there on, not quite to his house, but he, right behind motel.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Now, you own currently all of the area to the right of the cul-de-sac there that is identified as 2 to 4, 2 and 3?
Everything to the, I guess to the east, you're saying?
To the east, yeah.
Okay, yes, correct.
Is that your current?
I run, I run my paving business and I'm opening the boat and RV storage as soon as we get permitting done to build the buildings for the boat and RV storage. And then my paving business is running, well, we just, we have a laydown lot. We don't actually have a building, we just park our equipment there.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir. At this point, anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this project, please come forward? No takers? All right. If there's anyone that would like to speak against this project, please come forward.
I just have a question.
Have to go to the microphone, give us your name and address, and...
My name is Larry J. McLaughlin. Oh, I moved back to Villareca in 87. Now, y'all got all these blueprints and everything, I'm just dumbfounded. I ain't got nothing showing me what you're talking about or what, what, nothing explained to me or nothing, you know? Then you allow him to do what he gonna do, then he can come back and do the rest of it. That's ridiculous. If I say I want this thing done in commercial, then they... Or what going to hit me from doing all of the commercial later on?
As far as later on?
Yeah, so you got...
Well, we're...
Now, there was quite a, quite a contingency of the public that was here last month and spoke against this, as something changed in...
Oh, hang on a second, was that...
Yeah, I just didn't know where everything was, you know, because I know it gonna be stuff coming in.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and, and here I'm looking at this paper, here, and this paper saying 45 acres, and then this, y'all talking, you saying five acres. In other words, he gonna use 40 acres, but here, red, because we gonna go by what's written.
Mm-hmm, and that's what's up here, when you, when you resubmitted it?
That's awesome. The cost down there.
I don't know what this is. This is not open. This is just cleared.
So I ain't got to be bothered with none of that.
You're good.
Yeah. Now, if somebody had to bother me, somebody need give me eight hundred thousand dollars for my property land.
There you go.
If you gonna bother me.
Thirsty man right there.
Yeah. Your tax gonna go up?
No. Yeah, his way.
Now, there was quite a, quite a contingency of the public that was here last month and spoke against this. Has something changed in?
Oh, hang on a second.
Yeah, I just didn't know where everything was, you know, because I know it gonna be stuff coming.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and, and here I'm looking at this paper, here on this paper saying forty-five acres, and then this, y'all talking, you saying five acres. In other word, he gonna use forty acres, but here, red, because we gonna go by what's written.
Mm-hmm. And that's what's up here? When you, when you resubmitted it?
Okay. I guess rest of must agree at some point. Ain't nobody talked to me. Like I said, I was dumbfounded of everything, you know. You show me stuff and then I know. If I don't see, can't understand, I can't, what can I do?
Yeah.
Huh?
There you go.
So I, I depend on all guys, you know, the Planning Com- Commission, you know, because it's been residential for so long, you know, and then coming in changing, you know.
Yeah.
But, you know, I'm like, yeah, no, they ain't gonna mess with me, whatever y'all say, I guess.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank y'all.
All right. Okay. All right, at this moment, the public.
Apparently, this gentleman is the only one that, of the residents in that area appearing tonight?
So we did speak with the applicant about, and I'll certainly say both applicants, even though that other item is not under consideration at the moment, but we did speak with both applicants about the need to really get out and engage the surrounding neighbors to inform them of what their plans were and how they may be trying to change what may have been originally submitted. Really, I would have to defer to the applicant to talk about, you know, what those efforts specifically were and based upon the comments that they heard from the community, did they make any effort to try, to try to address those concerns? But that was certainly a conversation that staff had with the applicants.
All right. Did staff have any other written comments or letters from any of the residents in the area?
I did not receive any other written comments.
I have, can, it still concerns me that we have no idea what's going there. So is it possible to prove this with the understanding that before he's allowed to do anything, because there's fifty-seven different permitted applications for this So if someone comes in and decides to do the whole lot at one time, that they would be required to come back before zoning and get that approved as far as what it is?
Well, let me clarify. Major subdivide for an industrial business park, if you would. That requires coming back before you for consideration. So at the present time, they're limited to just those particular uses, but really, what staff typically does is to sit down on any kind of standalone project and talk about things that, you know, if you are, you know, industrial use or light industrial use, how can you provide a better transition adjacent to other different land uses, if you will? So staff works much more closely with those projects when they come forward.
So you have the ability to, like, increase buffer zones for some of the more noisy items or?
Well, he's got one of fifty foot right now.
He's got the fifty foot, but one of the things that we encourage, different site design standards that, you know, if, for example, they may have a buffer that spells out, we may talk to them about enhancing the buffer so that, you know, it provides more screening, if you will. Just maybe it's the fence installation, the type of fence, if it may be adjacent to an existing use. Again, there are just certain design standards that, just from experience, we find make a site more workable, if you will. But those are things that we work through during the development review process.
And I guess my other concern is, you know, we're kind of basing this on the new design. You had mentioned that, that we are due for a new overall comprehensive plan.
Compl- compl- update.
And so it may fit into the new plan or may not. I mean, we, we haven't developed the new plan, so we're kind of putting the cart before the horse on that. I mean, so we're picking out one area and saying. That's all the questions I have for staff.
Okay. Anyone else?
I tend to agree with John. Those were my concerns from last meeting as well as this one, that this still does not agree with a long-range plan, and this group has got to address that plan very, very quickly. And we are not. We're waddling along and this does not agree with that plan, and you're saying, yeah, that will be changed, but we don't know whether that change will accommodate this or not. It'll have to.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I'll certainly say, this was just staff recommendation, and I was essentially just looking at the site, just based upon, so what some of the existing uses happen to be in the surrounding area and based upon, again, that shortage of that land use, what would be an appropriate place, if you would. Certainly, as a commission, you have the opportunity to not necessarily support staff recommendation. If you want to go in the other direction, you're certainly able to do so, so.
Okay. All right. At this point, do we have a motion? I motion to accept. Let me spell it out. Track one for Light Industrial of three nine point zero eight acres and setting aside track two area residential of five point eight two acres by Doug Henderson, the applicant. Okay. I'll second. All right, we have two. Willie, three, three, two, three, four against.
Three, two. I voted with John.
Okay. So three, four, two against. Okay. So the motion carry. Okay. All right, thank you. Next up, we have staff comments by Vicki Coleman.
At this particular time, I don't have any additional comments. If there's something that you may want to ask me, then I'm happy to, to answer those, but I have no additional comments regarding any cases at this time.
Okay. Any upcoming cases that you're aware of for next time or?
Um, no, no upcoming cases. We're just, like I said, waiting to see what happens with the change in the layout of this particular annexation with concurrent rezoning. That's the only thing that's outstanding.
Okay.
Any, any thoughts about moving ahead with low-range plan?
What I can tell you is staff, we're conducting interviews this week for the Community Development Manager. So I would certainly say that that is the top item on the agenda of things to be completed in terms of, you know, the comp plan update, you know, with the meetings. I'd probably say, things will probably kick off probably within a couple of months or so of that person being hired, but typically, just from my experience of having gone through them in the past, usually you are wrapping up your comp plans update, my guess would be May or June of next year, sending it to the state for review at that time, and then typically the required adoption is no later than October. But you certainly want to give yourself time as a city to really be able to sit down and focus in certain areas. And I think the land use plan update, future land use map, if you will, is certainly one of those things that you don't necessarily want to rush through because, just for the example that you just saw, you're really going to have to have some considerations for where and how your industrial will grow if you want to be able to accommodate or address long-term economic development needs.
Any, has the city started any of the, the, look, search for the company that will help with the plan or the, as far as?
No.
They're waiting for the new staff?
I think that's the appropriate thing for the new Community Development Manager to work on, just so you're really almost taking full ownership of the, the planning process that you will move through over the next year. So I think it's appropriate for that person to handle that.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Next up, we have public. Ten minutes, any takers? There we go. Name and address, please.
My name is Kevin Cursey, and I live on sixty-five Church Road. I'm an employee of the City of Villarica, and just like to, just make a quick comment on this thing, that we were kind of blindsided and I wish that something could work out where this wouldn't happen again, where under the guise of the City of Villarica, because I work for them and I'm proud of them, that we have planning and zoning signs put out and advertised, and then our people come and we plan to do that, and then all of a sudden we're told because of a developer who was here weeks ago, who was an outsider, who's had plenty of time to come, we knew about the five, the six additional acres then, so a redrawing of it doesn't take weeks to do. And as a result of that, he gets catered to and, and, you know, our people, you know, all their time is wasted and the people we get back, it just makes it harder for them to come. And what I would like you guys to know. Okay? Because under no shape, form, or fashion do they want this development, and this is why, it's not their deranged people. And I speak for them, so this is, and you can look at that if you would. Here's a petition, and you can read how it's stated there, and this represents ninety-five percent plus of the residents. So it's. Rightly, opposition to this development. And here are the basic reasons why we do not want to meet with him or in no shape or fashion would ever be for this development is number one, it has the sewer issue and concerns that you guys brought up about the other. And what you guys need to know and keep with you, Villarica annexing him in, and the reason I know this, I forgot to tell you, I am the utility locator. I locate our water and sewer for the City of Villarica. We cannot get them sewer to this development. And you say, why can we not do that? Because it would have to come from seventy-eight, and the nearest sewer is behind Waterford right now. First Baptist is trying to get it to come down to the corner, but it's not there. But that's one issue over there. But to cross seventy-eight is not a great feat. You could do that. You could come down Van Wirt Road, there's a pipeline there, a colonial pipeline to go under. But your problem is, and the reason why it could never happen, is because there is wetland on both sides of the road, of Van Wirt Road, at the creek, and you would have to put sewer under a creek on, with two sides of wetland. The E P D would shut you down before you crank your first machine, and we would be in a lawsuit that wouldn't wait. This already should have been known if this man has been told by anybody from our staff or whatever that he can have sewer, all they would have to do is come to the Water and Sewer Department, and we could have told them that. Our guys, from Pete to Charlie to all of those fellows, they already know this. So we cannot furnish him with sewer. So this is what leads to the next thing. The development he is proposing with just ten acres was twenty-four units. Well, now he's going to add six acres onto that. So guys, you know as well as I do, developers are not in the business of selling land. He's going to put more units on that than the twenty-four, because it's gone from ten to sixteen now. Here's the problem. You cannot have septic tanks. The ground does not perk. I live, I can take you right now, so we don't need to waste anybody's money going out and doing perk tests. I can take you twenty-five yards from where his development is proposed to be, and I can make you walk in sewer. Okay? It, I've lived there for twenty-seven years. It's not one parcel of land, it is the entire area. I can take you to any side of that and show you private sewer systems and other things. So he cannot have septic tanks. So there's only one option which he's proposed. He's going to have a self-contained sewer system. And that is the problem that we would fight, because you can't go anywhere in Carroll County and show us a self-contained sewer system that's working, and for the City of Villarica to walk out on that line, this developer is off the hook within a year or so of this sewer system. Guess whose problem it is now when it fails? You know? It's the City of Villarica's. With us, and one of the reasons we have our Commissioner, Tommy Lee, that is behind me, and I've talked to the Carroll County Commissioners. See, the question is, why would he not go to Carroll County? Why would he not ask just, why does he need? That's a whole nother issue. He wants to bring in, there's not even a fire hydrant on Church Road where I live, where he wants his entrance. So guess what that's going to mean? You're going to have to replace the water mains, you know? And that's not even Villarica's system right now. So, you know, you've got issues like, like that. Carroll County knows that. That's why they would never, they would never do this and even consider it, because they know that's what's there. And so I would ask you to keep this in mind, that there is overwhelming opposition, not because we're against development, we're against this type of development sitting there, because the failure of this is astronomical. It is. You know, because it's going to fail, and then the taxpayers are going to, they're going to have to bail them out and have to, who's going to come in and develop an in-house sewer system? We don't do that. I work for the City of Villarica Water and Sewer. We don't do that. We've got our hands full doing our own. And so I just, you know, encourage you guys to think about this, you know, and that's why I would say, we're not interested in meeting with him, not only for those reasons, but for the traffic issues that would be, you know, it's astronomical dumping out on that little bitty narrow lane road with two exits that both have blind heels on them. And we've had, you know, we were in the proximity of a high school. And being right in this little corner to dump out, you know, that many things, you know, it would be, it'd be ridiculous. So I just, I encourage and urge you to think about this. There are very logical factual reasons why this should never happen, you know? And like I said, and that's why we're not being mean to him. We're not. He can't change that. And so. And talking to him at all on the development.
Have you submitted your petition to the city?
That comes after the meeting.
We had to put the county on notice that there was a request for annexation, and we wouldn't have been able to take action until after the county had been put on notice, which is why this would have been the first formal.
This would have been the first formal.
Agenda for consideration and a decision.
Okay.
As far as signs, though, they go out both times?
On both sides?
The lines with the dates for the meetings, it goes back out.
Yeah, but the county got the request, and see, I'm confused about the timing, you know, the county, we've already spoken to the general there, they had the request in their hands on March twenty-first, dated March twenty-first.
Okay.
So that was plenty of time to have that, you know, for us to be ready to go this time. The county already knows it, they're aware of this.
Okay.
So, that's my question, I'm like, this is supposed to be for a vote, that's what, you know, we came for, and then all of a sudden, a guy says, well, I'm gonna, I'm redrawing my little deal here, and I'm gonna meet with the constituents, which I know that's not true, and so I don't know about the drawing thing either. So I just, I would just encourage you, there's a lot of baggage that's going on here, and it would do well to check out what we're dealing with, because this is not the first rodeo that this gentleman has been in, and some things, and I think if you carefully check that out, you might find some things that would be very interesting to you, that might have you understanding why, and well, you've got video and audio, all you've got to do is go back, and you guys had missed the first presentation, and the missteps and the misleadings, you know, and if you just need to know one of them, the first one right off the bat was, he said, there is little to no opposition, I quote him. Well, what is that? Ninety-five percent plus opposition. The people who are not opposed to the people he's selling, they're gonna want to sell, contingent to selling the land, okay? So that's a misstep. The other one, he said, we have sewer two thousand feet away. Well, why would he be inquiring about sewer two thousand feet away if he's gonna do an in-house sewer system? And secondly, that was not true, there is no sewer two thousand feet away, all right? There's number two. The land perks, we'll get that, it'll be okay. The man doesn't live there, I do, the land doesn't perk, you know. All right, now, traffic, we're gonna take care of that, we're gonna put you up a red light at Church Road there. Well, I don't know who this guy thinks he is, and I'm not being ugly, but that doesn't happen, fourteen years to get a red light on seventy-eight, our high school still didn't have one, so, I mean, somebody's thinking here, well, when that didn't fly, you know, with the folks, he came before your city council, all this is on video, now we're gonna put a roundabout, I guess you just go to Home Depot and order a roundabout and put it out there. Now, guys, this is what we're dealing with, and that's why somebody saying things like that, I don't trust, and I have now good reason not to trust, if you'll do your research, you'll know as well, you know. And so it kind of greets me to know that this is what we're dealing with, and we come in good faith, with good reasoning, not emotional, not irrational, have very good reasonings why we don't think that this development, and guess what? We just put on hold, this guy's on playing with color crayons and drawing whatever he's doing there, and then he gets to come back, and maybe nobody will show up, because in his mind, I guess he thinks there's no opposition. And so I would just encourage you, you know, I mean, we love this, we're not against, like I said, development, this is not the type development for this corner. And oh, yeah, another thing, if you think about the price of homes, it's been touted as three hundred thousand dollar luxury homes, guys, do your homework. Two thousand seventeen, show me some three hundred thousand dollar homes that are sold anywhere around there, you'll find out the average sale of a home in Villarica, all the way as far as the Georgian, has been like a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The two subdivisions there, that we have, none of those, Spring Haven, all, none of them have a house of two hundred thousand.
Thanks for the job you guys do, I know you served and put your efforts for it. I'm Tommy Lee, District Three Commissioner, Carroll County. I received a petition, and we like growth in Carroll County, but we like controlled growth and the right kind of growth, and there are concerns about the sewer and roads, and I've talked to some other commissioners, and they have concern, but I just wanted to go on the record and say that I'm standing with these guys, and I appreciate you, I appreciate the job you do, I know it's hard sometimes, because we get some of this, but I don't think this is what we need.
Thank you, sir.
Of course, there's forty-five acres just north of where he wanted to go, that's currently available as a residential that we just voted against, moving it to Ida. So he could have gone up there.
That's right.
And that sewer.
Okay. Anybody else? Public comments? Okay, there's no other public comments, we're gonna close there.
When is our next meeting?
In May, yeah, we know, but it's, is it gonna be the thirty-first, the last day of the month?
The last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday of every month. Okay. That's why I'm asking. There you go. I wanna come the right date. May thirtieth. Okay, got you. All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? A second? Have a motion, a second to adjourn?